Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Gene Boyd and Bill Kiburnick. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smarall?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild, here. Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of minutes. We're not going to do that. All right, thank you.
Third order, 3A correspondence dated March 24th, 2023 from OECD ARPA Director Aileen Cipriani regarding American Rescue Plan update. 3B minutes of the Scranton Civil Service Commission meeting held March 7th, 2023. 3C correspondence received from City Business Administration dated April 4th, 2023 regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections.
Do any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So there's going to be a pasta dinner sponsored by the Boy Scout Troop 50, Saturday, May 6th, 2023, and it's at 1227 St. Anne Streets, Grand P.A., and it's going to be hosted at the St. Anne's food stand, I'm sure you know where that is, at the bottom of the hill. Tickets are available at the recce's office and the shrine gift shop or at the door. It'll be $10, serving from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Takeouts only. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Anyone else? Fourth order, citizen participation. Joan Hoda-Wanitz?
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton. Have we got a date for a caucus on the 2021 audit?
We don't at this time.
Okay, and has the mayor made a decision on the 10% penalty clause?
Not as of yet.
Okay. I checked the city's website at 2:15 this afternoon, and the DPW contract was still not there, but then it's only been seven months, so no hurry. But I did find something really interesting on the website. This was posted on April 5th. It's the firefighters' arbitration award. Have you all seen it and read it? Okay, well, let me share some of the key points with the public. For wages, for 2022, last year, 135 firefighters will get $2,000 each. That equals $270,000. 2023, this year, they get a 2% pay raise, which is about $215,000, for a total of $485,000. Now, during the budget discussions last year, I said, since DPW is getting a 2% pay raise, you ought to at least factor that in for both firefighters and police. No, they were flat, no pay raise, so now we have to come up with that money. I mean, anybody would know that they were going to get a pay raise, but... Couple other things of interest. Under the consolidated contract integration section, there's two things that the city has to do. It has to clean up the old expired contract, because it's full of unnecessary, obsolete, superseded, and aged-out provisions. Got to clean that one up before they can rewrite the new contract, which has to be done by August 2nd, 120 days from April 4th. Now, the question is, which will appear on the city's website first? This contract or the DPW contract? I'm taking bets. And under the dissent by the union arbitrator, Mr. Attorney Hallroyd, among other things, he commended the arbitration panel for, quote, "not blindly accepting the city's claims of still being on the brink of bankruptcy," unquote. Did you know that? Ooh, on the brink of bankruptcy. I'm sure the mayor knows it. And then the city representative, which is Attorney Uffberg, he came back with an interesting claim of his own that there were a lot of arbitration-related expenses not further defined. I think that's legal fees, and they would have been avoided had not the union strung the city out for well over a year and a half before finally pushing the arbitration button that they had available all along. So we don't know what those legal fees are going to run to. Which brings us to an overview of some of our financial troubles in the past week or so. Now, we have the trash lawsuits that were settled. The Schreiner slash Carr case, $2.5 million. Gofrida was $385,000, mine is $50,000, $335,000. That comes to $2.835 million. Then you add the tax mix-up with the Scranton School District. That's another $2.26 million. Takes us up to $5,95,000. Add in this $485,000 that we're, you know, we know we're probably going to get hit with the firefighters' contract, $5.58 million. That doesn't include legal fees, and we still have the police arbitration to deal with. They too got no pay raise in 2023. You need to bring in Mayor Cognetti for a caucus on how she's handling these issues. And during fifth order, please give us an update on Scranton's own version of key gate. I'd like to know why a key was left unsecured. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoda-Wanitz. Ron Elman?
Council. I was at Western Park last night. I walked around a good hour, and I'd like to congratulate volunteers of the city. They have really cleaned that place up and made a, cut down wild bushes and so forth. It looks great last night. People, I don't want people mad at me for trying to say some facts last week, but Na'ajgs, it's done and over with. It's like beating a dead horse, listening to people come here. It reminds me of Mr. Clark's group. They're still complaining about their home values after all these years. It didn't, the fact is, they bought homes across the street from a 100-year-old landfill built on a slag pile. Now it's the older, but if you, you talk to some, any of those people having a house for sale, there's no older. The older is all the property that they can't sell, and this, this is a fact. No older if your house is for sale, older if you want to get some kind of cash settlement. I don't know. It seems, it seems to me that Guy Singers has just taken advantage of the city of Scranton, their ignorance. When Lackawanna College bought that little building years ago, it didn't take a brainchild to realize they went outgrowing immediately, which is what happened. There should have been some restraints, something done to stop this then. Now, there's no stopping Guy Singers. 10, 20 years, they'll be huge down there, because that's their plan. The medical school wants a 15-acre area around there. They have no consideration for the property taxes here. If our taxes are gone by a third of the taxable properties, then our house taxes are a third higher than they should be normally. Then last, two weeks ago, that medical student came up here. He said, "We need to grin and bear it for the future." Future transits like him that come and go after a few years. Well, Mr. Medical Man, we don't need transits, and we don't need immigrants, and we don't need refugees. We need taxpayers desperately. There are just not enough taxpayers, and then you have examples like WNEP. Instead of being a good neighbor and paying their share, they go to court and... This is going to happen by heaps and bounds pretty soon. The only people that are going to go down, like Wayne Evans said, are the ones that can afford a lawyer to oppose the new reassessment values. And again, I don't care what anybody's saying, reassessment is just to raise taxes. That's what they're for, and they are going to skyrocket between paying for the reassessment. What are people like the ones that they aren't supposed to do when their values are down, like my block? You still haven't told, you haven't come up with any kind of solution for that.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. David Thompson?
Good evening, Council. Dave Thompson, resident of Scranton. Gee, I don't know if you caught it last week, but somebody was complaining about cat litter boxes in high schools or something. I was wondering, did you make sure those were changed, Mr. King, when you were in supervisor? Some of the stuff people read on the internet and take it hook, line, and sinker. It didn't only start with the more recent. There were plenty of reports and fake pictures of 9/11 where jets were propelled into the building by robots and such, and it was just a reason to go to war in a little insignificant country. It's a shame, but, you know, when you're reading on the internet, just be careful, because you do sound awful foolish. Lawsuit with our trash, once again, of course, it's landlords. They got themselves a break. Last year, you could have up to four units and rent them out and have city got trash. Well, instead of $1,200, they're paying $300. And more often than not, my experience with tenants is that they don't recycle or do anything to reduce the cost. So hopefully, we're not in for big stormy waters over that. And I will mention again, 18% of the county of Lackawanna property is tax exempt, and 12% of that exists in Scranton, and that was a 2019 assessment review. So probably, we have a great deal more, and we might be up to owning 20% of the tax-exempt properties, and they're exempt for various reasons and so forth. But there and again, you know, sometimes you scratch your head. My aunt's second marriage broke up, and I was talking to her one day, and the preacher in the church, her husband was pretty out there. And the preacher in the church's sermon was, "If a ping-pong paddle don't work on your kids, use a baseball bat." Well, I don't know what your opinion is, but my opinion is, a church like that does not need a tax exemption. They just don't need them, period. And more or less, we're being taken advantage of by the whole county and beyond, because these institutions do a great deal of things other than for the people in Scranton. I mean, that's all there is to it. Courthouses, you name it. We have an artillery shell manufacturer that's an entire, that might be larger than a city block, pays no taxes, even though they're a profit-making private corporation brought in by the government to own, run the place. And once again, I'd like to mention with the hospital. It would be interesting if we ever have time to call somebody in from the hospitals to see why all of this money is being lost, and I'm willing to bet that it has a great deal to do with COVID. People begging when they're on, being placed on a ventilator for the vaccine. Well, you know, the nurse just told them, or the attendant, that'll only make you sicker now. It's too late, and probably didn't make it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Can I go? Oh, man, I didn't even have my way. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Derek Rains, Scranton resident. Sorry I'm late, but there's no handicap parking anywhere near here. How many people who work here have ever been out in an electric wheelchair and thought to themselves, "Boy, where do we park at? There's no handicap parking anywhere." We had to park way down past the blind association. No handicap parking, whole backyard all filled with stuff. Totally ADA regulation that you have handicapped accessible parking here, and we don't. But that's just one of the countless problems in this city. I'm going to preface what I'm going to say. I heard people talking about the paving and everything. So I looked online. I couldn't find anything about, is my block going to be fixed with my issue with the paving? I don't think it is, because I can't find anything, and nothing has been done. And then I heard a man here talking about, "Oh, I've had this problem for two years, and the city fixed it," and I thought to myself, "I've had my problem for 20 years, 20 years." It's been on the TV, it's been in the newspaper, nothing has ever been done. So how did he get his fixed in two years? Anybody have a clue how he got that done in two years? I have now. My doctors told me I need to start getting out of the house. Dr. Jessica, I can't see if you're actually there, but I need to get out and get moving. I need to be able to drive my chair. I need to be able to drive down to the hospital. I need to be able to drive to my favorite restaurant, and I can't, because this city has horrible, horrible sidewalks, horrible pave cuts. There's a big hole on my corner at the kid's bus stop. I've complained about that for at least two years. Nothing is done. I had the head of DPW come out, said, "Oh, yeah, your whole road needs to be repaved." Well, I already knew that. That's been known for years. Nothing's been done. Can any of you tell me how I can get my area handicapped accessible? We heard people talking about the laws, what we're supposed to follow. The city doesn't follow those laws. They don't follow ADA. Why? Why not? Why can't I get my, and I'm not yelling, it just seems that way. Why can't I get my simple problem fixed in front of my house 20 years? Is there any kind of time limit? And that guy who complains, he gets his fixed in two years. The people on East Mountain, they got their stuff fixed. What do I have to do to get my block paved and make it so I can drive as a disabled person in my chair? What do I have to do? Can any of you tell me what needs to be done for me to get my problem rectified in this city? I can't see...
Mr. Waldenberg, wasn't Mr. Rains' street submitted down to DPW for...
It was, Mr. King, and they all met there in early March, but I have heard nothing today.
Yes, they did. Everybody came out. We had a great visit, and everybody agreed it needs to be paved.
When is the list going to be released? I know there's an OECD list, and there's a city paving list.
We're not on the OECD.
I reached out for the list. I haven't received it yet from DPW. OECD will not have a paving list this year, but they will have an ADA handicap curb cut program in place of the paving. I'm not sure when that'll start. I'll find out.
Is Mr. Rains', is his corner there, or right by his house there, is that included in that list, that ADA list, do you know?
I'll recommend that it is. I'm sure it will be.
We've talked about it numerous times. Why can't DPW do their job? You have a big hole on each corner. I said to the guy when he came to my house, I said, "Why don't I just go buy a bag of Quickcrete and fill up the hole?" And he said, "Oh, yeah, that's a good idea." Why don't we get that stuff done? I pay, my wife and I pay $6,000 a year in property taxes for my house, $6,000. My wife and I, I'm retired, I have a good disability, my wife has a very good job, and we talk all the time, "Should we just leave this city? Because the city's doing nothing for us." Can the city get away without our 100-plus thousand dollars of tax that my wife and I pay between our wage tax and our property tax? Is it okay for you guys if we just leave and turn our house into another rental property? We don't need any more rental properties. We need to do stuff to get people to stay in their houses. And I'm sick of complaining about it, and I want somebody to tell me how I can get my problem fixed. I don't have to say, I'm a disabled veteran, 20-plus years, retired, and I can't get this city to fix my problem. It's not like it's the first time. Mark McAndrew, how many times have I talked to you about it? Countless.
Derek, I apologize. I'll be honest with you. I thought that there was some action being taken with regards to the last, like in March. I remember receiving correspondence, everybody's coming out, everybody's...
Oh, yeah, we're going to take care of it.
Everybody's going to take care of it. Well, obviously, they didn't, and I apologize. Sometimes we think that follow-up occurs, so evidently, it didn't. So, Mr. Waldenberg, I'm not going to wait till fifth order. All the emails and the correspondence that I've had with, and so have you, with Mr. Rains, let's get this finished, and I think I said this in March. Now I'm saying, there's no more excuses. It's unexcusable. So please, send correspondence. We want this done, period.
Mr. Rains, is it the corner of Ash in Monroe or the next one up?
They're on both. There's a corner of Ash and the corner of Myrtle. They both have non-handicap things that go through them, but the big thing is, when it rains or anything, I get four, five, six inches of water that sit in front of my driveway, and my wife will tell me, "You're not bringing that chair inside the house. You're going to have to do something else, because she'll have to clean my chair to be able to go from the street up my handicap ramp into my house."
It's just horrible.
Okay, we will make that a priority, and we'll be able to hopefully respond by next week with an answer.
Mr. McAndrew, have we heard that before?
Yeah, but, well, you know, we sat here earlier and caucused, heard all the wonderful streetscapes and all the stuff we're going to do with, you know, this ARPA money, the 60, almost $69 million. And it's just unacceptable, unacceptable to me that you're not taken care of by now, or your area or your street. And it's not just you. Someone else can get hurt there. It's not all about you, and I get that, and we've had great conversations, but at this point, it's just beyond unacceptable. There's no excuses. We won't tolerate any more excuses. Tell that, Mr. Waldenberg. Thank you.
Well, I am greatly happy to hear that, but Dr. Jessica, are you here?
Yeah, she said, yes, I'm present.
Do you know more than anybody, I need to get my bottom out and get moving. I've sat in my house for three years, and I was told I need to get outside and start doing things. And I need to be able to do things. I need to be able to drive down my street. I don't mind riding in the middle of the road, which I did here. We parked all the way down. I can't remember how far away we had to park, but I would love to be able to go out and do stuff. And I'm an abled body, disabled person. I feel so bad for the people who can't do anything, and the city really needs to step up to the plate and make disability access a priority for this city.
I'll make that a priority, Mr. Rains. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all of you.
Just to make sure that you're on the paving list, and that they get down there to pave your street. We'll make sure of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did I hear my wife behind me? Did you have something else that I forgot?
No, I have red lights on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, I can use the "I'm blind" excuse. Thank you all so much.
Good evening, Council. Tom Coymanuka. While waiting here, I had to drop off some paperwork earlier today, and I took the chance to take just a little stroll around Center City. One of the interesting things I found was, right out back of the building here was Mr. Olefsky's city car sitting back there. Well, the city car is probably in here doing business, but it's very interesting in taking a look in it, just wandering around it. In the dashboard column are the set of keys for that very own car. I mean, nothing attracts someone to break in and steal anything more than the entire set of keys right in the console. But on top of that, there's money sitting there as well. And even though they weren't officially ones they shouldn't drive with, you know, empty pill bottles on the front seat. I think that having three pill bottles per Scranton... I think that having three pill bottles prescriptions, emails on where you're going to for inspections visible and not in a folder, and money and car keys in there. I understand that the building had an issue with a master key being left unsecure. I don't see how leaving keys in the middle of a console in the car, sitting there publicly visible. I didn't try the door, for all I know, I could have hopped in there, opened the door up, and took off with the car. I think none of that should happen, and none of that should be visible when you look in a city car that you see open pill bottles. But what happened with most people is the cops would pull them out for being possibly under driving under the influence if something happened. You don't bring pill bottles and just lay them sprinkle all over your car. The impacted map that we saw up here for different areas, it's very interesting if you took a look at that impacted map. Did you notice that the entire University of Scranton is an impacted area? Did you notice that one of the other impacted areas, a small cutout called Geisinger is somehow an impacted area? I'm not sure how the Geisinger Hospital is considered on that map a impacted area. So I have questions about the accuracy of what an impacted area is on that map. We took a look, and it said there was $52 million, $5.2 million that were allocated in the Flex Fund. That means there's $4.8 million still unallocated. Maybe it's time to stop some of that allocation and say, we need to pull some of it and redress it. We need to stop and put some of that towards the pool. But that takes fortitude. I took a look at our website. I think we have $170,000 extra in insurance that we pay because of the last cybersecurity breach of this building that I warned you about before it happened. We pay $170,000 a year extra insurance. When I took a look at it, I see it's WordFence 6.2. The login that's used for building that page is admin. You never should have admin as a login on your system. The basic cybersecurity is the first thing you do, is you make an admin account and you get rid of that name because it's a direct attack vector. You don't have your site announce what version of WordPress you're on, what plugins it has. None of that should be front-facing. That is a complete security hole. Are you going to be taking over for mayor when she goes on maternity leave? Because when she's on maternity leave, I believe the head of council takes over as a mayor. I think that's right before Christmas. Are you getting ready for that spot?
I'm praying she's in and out.
Well, that's inconvenient because we need her to have her time, to take her time for maternity leave, and she shouldn't be double-dipping, so you need to take that hat. Last is the money that the city is considering floating a loan for. I think maybe we need to recall the $35,000 or whatever it is that we just gave the lawyer. If we're going to put through loans for the city, we need freezes on employee administrative pay until these loans are paid. There needs to be teeth, because right now, for all of the money that we have to pay in courts, the people who are getting these refunds, if it's done by a loan, are paying for the loans to pay themselves, and that is completely wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Good evening, Council. Dave Rinaldi, 212 Colfax. I have a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to read you this. I found this in some of my research on these large medical corporations like Geisinger. According to the Physicians Advocacy Institute, 75% of physicians now work for hospitals, health systems, or corporate entities. So healthcare is a corporate business. That's one of the reasons why I believe that any negotiations the city has with Geisinger only have to do with money. It's a question of money, and the city should get as much as they can for the city as a whole and for the residents in our neighborhood as is possible. And I hope you think about that when you're trying to decide. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, I asked a question last week, and it's important to me so I know the basis for my testimony at the public hearing next week on the 18th. And that was whether or not the amendment, which is Council File 54 of 2023, is for the current ordinance or for SAPA. SAPA being, if it's approved, it will not take effect until the last municipality approves it.
It falls under SAPA.
It is SAPA.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks very much. I do appreciate that because that brings in a whole other community that has a say on this. But thank you very much, and I want to wish everyone, everyone in the audience a happy holiday and a joyful time season. Thanks.
Good evening, Council. I wanted to find out, was there any word on any of the studies that Mary Beth had brought up last week, that they said they were going to check on the lighting study, the water study?
I don't believe any of those studies have been completed at this time. I believe that once an expansion of the hospital, if it comes to that, that they'll be required to do certain studies associated with any expansion with that. But I will address that a little bit further in fifth order.
Okay, because I would like to understand myself, how an informed decision is made to give a vote on something that they can then do whatever they want without studies being done first to see if it should be feasible? And I would like to suggest that if the hospital is negotiating with council or telling council what they plan to do on any of the important things like lighting or anything like that.
I'm going to address that in fifth order.
Okay, that you get it in writing so that they can't back out and change their mind if you approve. Okay, that's on the hospital, that's about it for me on that. One of the things I wanted to write, ask about was benches for the bus. In a lot of big cities, you see that there's shelters with a bench in it for people waiting for buses. And I don't know who would address that here in Scranton, but I'm only interested in the one on my corner of Colfax and Mulberry. The bus comes there and people wait that are coming in and out of the hospital. Basically, they're the only people that take the bus on that corner. There's no residents taking the buses. It's always people coming from their appointments. Most of them are handicapped, they're standing there with canes. The lucky ones, I guess, I wouldn't say they're really lucky, but the ones in the wheelchairs at least can sit down. They're standing there in the rain and the weather because it's across catty corner from the hospital. I don't know whose responsibility it would be to put a bench or a shelter. I know I've often had to invited people to come sit on my porch that I don't know to get out of the weather, you know, or actually, I gave somebody money in a wheelchair to take an Uber or a cab down to the bus station because Geisinger had given them the wrong bus schedule and the bus wasn't going to be there for another hour or so. So, I mean, something like that should be addressed in an area like that because that's really the only reason that the bus has to stop there anymore, is for the patients, and there really should be something for them, like a decent bench with some shelter over it. And I don't know if that's the city's responsibility, the bus company's responsibility, or the hospital's responsibility, but I'd like to see something done for the people. Thank you.
We'll look into that, Mrs. Kloski. I'm not sure if that's the county, Colts, if it's the city, a combination.
Well, I'm not sure either, but I figured I'd bring it up here because it's really very unfair to the people when it's raining, when it's snowing, the people in wheelchairs are sitting in the road because there is, they can't wait in the hospital lobby or they're going to miss the bus. And there's, I mean, I have a ramp, so I say, if you want to come up and sit on my porch, but I don't really like inviting strangers on my porch either, but, you know, you got to do something, has to be done. It's really not right, and I don't know whose responsibility. And speaking of handicapped, this is nowhere near the issue that this other poor man has with the street, but they still have not done anything about cutting down those curbs.
I'll be addressing that in fifth order as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Waldenberg, can we reach out to Colts and the county to inquire about that, and even the city administration, try to get some answers as to who would be responsible and how it's determined where they would be located? I'll reach out to Colts in the morning, sir. Thank you very much.
Joanne Williams, Grant resident. I'm here also, I'm going to talk about Geisinger. What's going on up there now, I have a home, I own partly owned, 220 Colfax, is the houses that they tore down, the land they're putting hay on, probably going to grow grass. They wouldn't believe the noise that went on while they were doing that. And I can only imagine when they start building, the pollution of noise that there's going to be and dirt, which we've already had. Also, our property values, like I told you before, have come down. The 300 block of Colfax, forget about it, because during the day, you can't get through there. I mean, they've really taken a beautiful neighborhood and ruined it. They don't even want to reach out, you know, to talk or discuss things, and that's the way it is. But anyway, you know, I hope when you're voting next week, I'm glad you made this gentleman a priority. You need to make the taxpayers a priority. The people who lived in this city, my grandparents bought that home in 1933. You need to make us a priorities and the children, not these corporations. What's best for us, we've lived here all our lives. We hope our children stay and continue to live in the city of Scranton. Now going to the priority of children, let's talk about Naok Park. We need a pool up there. Splash pad is fine, but what elderly people want to go on a splash pad if they want to go for a swim? Have you seen the playgrounds lately? I mean, the park is beautiful, I compliment the volunteers that have done work up there, and the trees being planted, you know, in memory of deceased people. But there is, across from the zoo down, Mayor Doherty, he got a bunch of volunteers, and we resurrected a playground down there. It's deplorable now. There's no place for children to go to that park and swing on a swing. You can't just have one little set of swings, it's a huge park to play up there. And now you're not going to put a pool, and how long is that going to take to get this done? This mayor, mm, you know, really. I know she doesn't want a pool. She, I don't even think she lives in the city of Scranton, okay? We have to start thinking about the people who have lived here, the people who pay taxes, the people who pay high rents, and mostly the children. So I hope you all remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Hey, folks. Ken Norton, Scranton. I've got a couple of things. I happen to be up at the Kaiser Valley Community Center over the weekend, and the parking lot area is below the curbing of the road. So all the water seems to be backing up in the parking lot, and it seems as though it's done some damage to the building. The blocks are cracked and everything of the sort. Now, right next door to the parking lot is also a lot, an overgrown lot. I don't know if it belongs to the community center or whoever it is, but if it's possible that it could get cleaned up and be used for additional parking, you know, and really, it just does need to be cleaned up, that's for that. The other thing is, down towards Memorial Stadium, you do have lighting, but when the evening, especially in the fall when the games are going on and everything, with the oncoming traffic, it's very difficult to see the kids or adults when they're walking across the street. So I was wondering if you can go ahead and get more of a shallow kind of light that would at least reflect that the individual is walking out, you know? And that would be number two. Number three, I understand you have a new internet company that's running basically fiber through the city on the poles and such. That goes ahead and leads to another thing. You have, I'm assuming, 10 zoning officers because they just got 10 new electric vehicles. Now, according to the PUC, okay, it is up to the city or the municipality to go ahead and turn in poles that haven't been changed over so they can go ahead and technically find them. Will they do it? No, the way it's worded is it is a reasonable amount of time, okay? But you have a tremendous amount of poles in the city that have not been transferred over, and really, to the individual and the handicap, you are taking away from access because basically they got to put them in the sidewalks, you know? So instead of having one pole, you may have two. If you go down Greenwich Street, you can go ahead and see there's three poles that are stacked together, you know? But anyways, it seems to be, somebody is going to have to go ahead and just call out the companies to go ahead and change over their stuff, which is basically the zoning officers. Final thing, which, okay, I got to go with number four here. Down that line, you have an awful lot of communication lines that are laying around, you know, they're cut down, they're tied to poles and everything like that. Once upon a time, that used to be a really big no-no because the power company always responded to wires down because of the fact it may be a power wire. But now it is basically accepted to leave wires laying all over the place. And there is a slight possibility that in the future, someone may get hurt because the average Joe really doesn't know the difference between a cable TV wire and a power wire. So I'm just bringing that up where it pretty much goes back to the city to try and go ahead and hold everybody accountable. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
Ray Schumacher. I guess I'll start off, since we're talking about handicapped people. I think most of you know that I spent a good number of years pushing one. I think most of you know that I spent a good number of years pushing one, and you learn a lot, which is, get on the cadum, don't go on gravel paths, which they used to have at Naught. I don't think they still do, but, and, but the biggest one is I don't think a penny should be paid for anything down here in town until the streets are able to, the drains are able to take the stormwater and put it down where it's supposed to go. Many times when we were down here, you had to go out in, because the curbs was, you know, get wet, so you have to go down half a block to, till, and then you have to go up over the curb. So it's not, those aren't cutout areas either. So I think that should be number one in our walkability. And then, moving on, last week, Muske, you told us that there would be the fire contract would be available tonight, and the police would be April, and I missed the, the date that was?
I believe the police go to arbitration the final week, the last week of April.
Last?
And the fire is posted on the city website.
Okay, good, thank you. Is there anything that could be done to help ECTV get the speaker that's needed for back there as they had?
I believe that's been ordered, and it should be, Mr. Volenberg?
It has been received, Mr. King, and it may be up by next meeting.
Oh, hooray, thank you. That's good news, you should have announced that yourself. Now, is there anything new that would add nine, to the nine tax-exempt properties that are contributing to, with payments in lieu of taxes? Has anything increased that nine?
Other than right now, right now that Attorney Cattillo is preparing an RFP to have a HUP test performed for, I think there's 1,601 properties that are identified as nonprofit. So they put out an RFP, they're going to put an RFP out shortly, and then they're going to apply this HUP test to, you know, various nonprofits that they may have qualified, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, but maybe things have changed over the last several years to test and see if they still qualify, and if they don't, they have to go back on the tax rolls. So that's one key thing that's happened.
Yeah, and you just said something that's really important, is reviewing them periodically. And I brought that up at the county meetings, too. That should happen. I don't know if you can put it into the code with just you guys voting on it, or if that's a state thing or not, but I think that's certainly worth looking into. Let me see. Well, I would like to say also that I'm happy to see the trash settlement finally. That was, that was good. Now, but there was, in 3B on tonight, in tonight's, it said that they cannot proceed with entry-level police examinations until the mayor, they get some kind of a confirmation from the mayor.
Yeah, it indicates that the contract's been signed, the police chief has a copy of the contract, commission is awaiting confirmation from the mayor's office to proceed with entry-level police examination.
Yeah, I know that, that's why I was asking, has that happened? Who's following up on that to make sure that we, they can get going on this?
Apparently it hasn't happened yet, or if it has, I'm not aware of it. So, Mr. Volenberg, can we ask the administration for an update on that?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, I've got to do one more because of the timing, but on the 3C, on the payroll property tax, I found it confusing, and I didn't bring it with me, but it was something that, how much was collected in the month? And then it said, what, year-to-date? And they didn't, there was quite a difference in there, so I don't know how that happened.
I think it's breaking up, broken up into quarters, and I believe that it started, if I'm correct, April 1 of last year, so the fourth quarter would have just ended, the end of March, or would that have been the end of February, the end of March? So it's broken down into the four quarters, and they're all fairly, it was 460,000 the first quarter, 402,000 the second quarter, 418,000 the third quarter, and 434,000 the fourth quarter. There's other dollar amounts, but rounding.
Yeah, but one said a month, but I'll, I'll bring it back next week if I don't have anything other than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher.
Good evening. Barbara O'Malley, Wheeler Avenue, Scranton. On May 4, the city of Scranton will join cities across the country celebrating Jane Jacobs' 107th birthday. Jane, who was born in Scranton, is best known for her groundbreaking book, The Life and Death of Great American Cities, which changed the course of urban planning, and for her, also for her community activism. Jane is a grad, was a graduate of Central High School. She worked at the Scranton Tribune before making her way to New York City. It was there that she rose to prominence as a neighborhood activist. The film Citizen Jane tells the story of the successful David and Goliath fight to save her Greenwich Village neighborhood from the bulldozer. In 2021, at an observed Scranton event, Mayor Cognetti lauded Jane as a native Scrantonian who embodied the spirit of Scranton, which she described as the community looking out for one another. She attributed Jane's upbringing in Scranton to her activism and to her efforts to protect her neighborhood, to make sure it didn't get, in the mayor's words, "cut up." We too, the Hill Section residents and park neighbors, are driven by that same Scranton spirit. We don't want our neighborhood to get cut up either by zoning designations that would permit 100-foot structures across the street from homes, completely overshadowing and isolating them from the rest of the neighborhood. Yet we are portrayed as obstructionist against expanded health care services. This is simply not true. What we are against is our neighborhood being treated as expendable by our elected officials. It has been suggested that the residents of the neighborhood should get over it and face the fact that they live in a hospital zone. But the same thing could be said about Geisinger. Perhaps they should face the fact that they moved into an existing city neighborhood decades ago. The door swings both ways. Mayor Cognetti also spoke of the great responsibility elected officials have to keep the principles of Jane Jacobs alive in our city. One of Jane's rock-solid principles is bottoms-up planning, which relies on the wisdom of the people who live in the affected area for input. Jane disdained top-down planning, which is imposed upon residents by politicians, consultants, planners, and special interests. As you have heard from the testimony of our group, there has been a lack of credible information from Geisinger and stonewalling about the actual plans. Yet it also appears that some information and access is being parceled out to select individuals and elected officials, which gives the impression of political gamemanship. On May 4, a flag will be raised at City Hall to celebrate Jane Jacobs' Day in Scranton. But now is the time for City Council to raise a flag on behalf of the people who live in the affected neighborhood. Amend the proposed zoning in the blocks surrounding the hospital to cap structures at 45 feet, a livable scale and a workable compromise. This will demonstrate that Scranton has truly embraced the ideals of Jane Jacobs, not just the idea of her neighbor, of her native celebrity. Thank you.
Barbara O'Malley. Does anyone else like to be heard?
Hi, I'm Rick Little from Scranton. I tried to go to Bob Casey's office today, and they told me he hasn't been there for three years, so I don't know what to do about that, because my problem is federal, and I'm trying to navigate my home. I'm just trying to stay alive for my daughter, who was parentally alienated from me. I haven't seen her since she was eight, she's 22 now, and I have to stay living where I am, because that's the last address that she had, and I'm too old to move. And yet, I'm seeing, after going, dealing with New York State Family Court system, they're just out to destroy the family, and the courts are business. I learned that very well. I testified at the Morling Commission in front of Loretta Lynch, of all people, back in 2013. I ended up here, and Lackawanna County decides that a person is supposed to be given a basic living thing. It's approximately $850. But almost immediately, I got, I got in, the Department of Taxation in New York State under the guise of helping the children, you know? They had a $5,000 child support arrears where they took my social security from out, out from under me in Queens, New York. And I go to Matt Cartwright's office over and over, and, you know, and so I'm living in, just trying to get by, and I talked to my landlord, they have a thing called recertification. I live at Scranton Housing Authority, and I've been trying for years to figure out who they are, their lawyer, David Coyne, who is also the district attorney, outright refuses to tell me the first and last names of the people that work there. Yet they prosecute me all the time by saying that they have a right to just burst into my room. They burst into my room about 100 times. They flooded my apartment twice. Once, I mean, they put the maniac above me, he floods my apartment, it destroys $3,000 worth of family court transcripts, which was key to taking my child away from me because of the process of the court. And when she turned 18, that was, that was the end of it. Anyway, now they keep trying to evict me, that there is a disc, there's a big problem here, because I have to witness all these people dying in my building, watching people's stuff being stolen in my building. They confiscated my stuff, they still have, sort of have my stuff confiscated because they put it in, in charge of this ever-changing building manager who, at the whim, they can lock the door. And then I call security, who's working at security? It's Pat O'Malley, you know, $53,000 security job, and I ask him, I don't know who to talk to, they're supposed to talk to me. Under 2024 CFR, the federal rules, they should not be able to do this. In my lease, it is written that all the county and city and state amenities are supposed to be unbiasedly handled by my landlord, and yet it is not. They have the magistrate judge right in the pocket, and they take me, and they've taken hundreds of other people, and people become homeless. Fortunately, I learned how to protect myself the last time, and I just barely managed to get the appeal in, and now they've just evicted me, and I just got the appeal in yesterday. I'm trying to move it to federal court, but there's a big problem with Scranton Housing Authority and the County of Lackawanna, Department of Aging, the Lackawanna pro bono colluding to make old people and disabled people homeless. And I hope Scranton can help me, because I've done right the nose, and I'm up to my neck and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Does anyone else like to be heard?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Smell, do you have any motions or comments?
I do a few things. I responded to a call to look at Connel Park, they said dangerous situation around the play areas. I had found that the mulch up there had been worn away, or it's pretty much gone, anywhere from six inches to about 18 inches down in all of the play areas up there, around all the play equipment. I took pictures of it all, and while I was there, neighbors came across, and they advised me that on Friday, a child had fell there and struck her head. I won't give their name, but I sent the pictures and to Mr. Volenberg, requested he forward it to Parks and Rec, which I believe now Mr. West is handling that. And also, I was at, the group of neighbors also offered to come over and help pull the weeds, put the ground cover down, and spread the mulch, but I don't know if that would be allowed, so Mr. Volenberg, if you would find that out?
I will, sir.
And on the corner of Prospect Avenue and Elm Street, there's construction on the street, I believe they're putting water mains and gas mains in. But on this corner, I believe the city took down an abandoned building, or a building that was on the condemned list, in the demo list for a long time. The construction equipment is parked there, solar materials stored there, pipe, backfill and other things. I don't know where they got the permission to park there, but the corner is filthy. The rest of the corners are clean, but I also took pictures of the surrounding corners and that area. I took pictures of the equipment with the names on it to whom it belongs to. So I forwarded that to Mr. Volenberg, and if you would send that to, I believe, Director Alessi, and find out who is going to clean the area. I hope they, they're using the equipment, or they're storing their equipment and material, that they would clean the place up, and before they leave it, that they will level it back out the way they found it, and at the minimum, plant grass to make it at least presentable
I'll take care of it, sir.
Thank you. And our first community cleanup that we're going to have is Sunday, this Sunday, the 16th, at 9:00 AM. It starts at 886 North Main Avenue, and we're going to do that entire field all the way down to the entrance to the expressway. So, Mr. Volenberg, will you ask Director Petroface if he will send a truck there on Monday morning to pick up all the trash and whatever else we can put up there? So it's not scattered throughout the street?
I will, sir.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smell. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you. Two things, both are follow-ups. It was mentioned in public comment tonight about the utility poles. I know, Mr. Volenberg, you and I both had a conversation that started with Don King. Could we just send over some correspondence to him to continue that about the double utility poles, or the utility companies taking out those, the poles, once the power gets transferred over to the new pole?
A follow-up, sir. They did compile a list along with PPL a few months ago. I'll get a status. I'll get a status.
The other thing is, could we reach out to Mr. West in the VA's office and ask if we have any bids or RFPs put out for any of the work on our FEMA projects? He was in a short time ago. They did get an extension out to December from the 2018 storm and flooding that we had. And those projects, because I'd like to see that they've been started. But could we just see if we've put out any of those out to bid or started any of those projects?
I'll look into it, sir.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, just a few things. So, first off, I received an email. There were concerns that I brought forward a few weeks ago about Reese Street in North Scranton. And one of the things I believe we had requested was a traffic study to take place on Reese Street because of a few different issues, but one of them being people entering the one-way pretty often. So someone had actually sent me a video of someone driving the wrong way on the one-way part of Reese Street. So, Mr. Waldenberg, if you could check to see if that traffic study request was made or the status of it. They would also like to see if new signs are appropriate, new signs for "do not enter", so that it's more obvious to drivers that they should not be driving that way on the street. And I know Mr. Raines had come in earlier to bring up his concerns about his street and just handicap accessibility in general throughout the city. And that's still something that's very important to me to address. And I had previously requested, at least for City Hall, what areas we could make changes and improvements in so that we could become more ADA accessible. And I never received a response that I'm aware of. So if we could please make that request again. I also would like an update from DPW on the handicap signs that we had requested for downtown. I know that there was a delay because of the issues with the sign maker, but now that we have the new sign maker, I want to make sure that that's prioritized, that those signs are made and placed downtown. And I also never received anything from the Scranton Police regarding, I had questions on the amount of tickets for people parking in those handicap-only spots downtown, which people are frequently parking in without having the proper tag for it. So if we could, once again, ask the Scranton Police for that information.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew?
Yes, I don't have any motions, but I have a comment. So, tonight Doris came forth, and I always say that, you know, sometimes the best ideas come from the residents. There are eyes and ears on council. So you've been coming here for months, and all you've wanted was just a reasonable height restriction on the parking garage. Reasonable, right? And tonight, you demonstrate to me what a good neighbor really is, because you voiced your concerns about Geisinger's patients who have to stand out in the weather waiting for a bus. So that's a sign of a good neighbor. Even though you want something reasonable, and of course, I agree with you, but you showing concern for the patients of the entity that you're, you know, you're having a little problem with, I'm impressed and very proud. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. So just a follow-up from the previous week. I know Maurice Schumacher had mentioned 842 Music Street. We've notified code enforcement, and they will advise council as to their findings at 842. I think that there was some garbage piled up there in front of 842. The 1500 block of Birch Street, we notified DPW, and we're waiting for a response on that. The Meadowbrook Flood Project easements, the City Law Department is to advise on the status and number of easements outstanding as it relates to this project. Doris had mentioned the curb cuts at Gibson and Colfax and Olive and Colfax Avenue. We notified DPW, and they will advise council. Council Office was advised that OECD will have a project in the 2023 for ADA-compliant curb cut updates. So I think that was mentioned earlier as well. Mr. Les Spindler, we talked about the Family Dollar Store at Linden Street and North Main Avenue last week. Scranton Police Department Traffic Officer Rich Iainuzo is to meet with the city engineer, Riley Associates, at that location for next steps, and will advise council on that issue. And the 1300 block of Brook Street, about a large pave cut. I guess they're going to get back to us on that. Joe Hordewannens, we contacted the single tax office, and we're advised that action is under review by the STO Solicitor. That's your question. Also, it was mentioned earlier this evening that we don't need immigrants. We need taxpayers. Well, you know, who says that immigrants aren't taxpayers, first of all? And second of all, I think we're all immigrants. And to me, that's just, it's unacceptable. I think immigrants make this community great, and I'll continue to say that. And I think diversity makes our city great. So to make a statement like that, to me, is just, it's unacceptable. So I'm going to call it out every time it's mentioned, and I'm calling it out again tonight. I do want to announce that a notice is going to go out tomorrow. At Scranton City Council, we'll hold a special public caucus here in City Council chambers on Tuesday, April 18th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. Purpose of this caucus will be to discuss the Geisinger Expansion Project as it relates to the proposed 2023 zoning ordinance. And Geisinger representatives will be here for that caucus at 5:00. The public is welcome to attend. All public comment will be reserved for the scheduled public hearing to follow the caucus. So council has never formally had the opportunity to meet with Geisinger. So we're going to bring them into caucus, and we're going to have them do a little presentation. And then we'll have some questions for them, and many of which will be based on things that have been brought up in these chambers. So, and it's important to note, too, that there will be no vote that evening on the zoning ordinance. The vote at this time is expected the following week, April 25th. And that's all I have at this time.
5B for an introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton in partnership with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for up to $300,000 to be used for the engineering and design of the pedestrian bridge over the Lackawanna River at the former Scranton Street corridor.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for an introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Trust for Public Lands on Common Ground Program for up to $24,000 to be used for the infrastructure to support programming at Connors Orchard Street Park.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for an introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Bay Hill Environmental Services to perform lead inspections and risk assessments.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
The question, I mean, this is very important. I mean, I remember growing up where lead poisoning was, it happened a lot, because kids were eating paint chips. And I'm sure that they still remain in some of these houses, because there's a lot of still older houses around. But I read through this legislation. I'm not against it, but I don't know how these houses are going to be identified for this high-risk property assessment. It doesn't state it anywhere in there. And I don't know what happens after that, what the remediation is. What does it look like? Who's going to help these residents that have a child six years or under? So, of course, I'll move it forward, but I do have questions. And is this voluntary, or how do they identify these homes?
Perhaps, Mr. Waldenberg, can you forward those questions to the administration? Hopefully have those answers by next week. I'd like to hear those answers as well.
Thank you.
I'll get them.
All those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, filed with Council Number 56, 2023, establishing a no-parking zone along the easterly side of the 17 and 1800 blocks of Bloom Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to allow for access of large vehicles to traverse the roadway.
What's the recommendation of chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 217, 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for up to $200,000 in funds for Weston Field Park rehabilitation.
What's the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 218, 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton in partnership with the Trust for Public Land, Valley in Motion, and Scranton School District for the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation 2023 Culture of Health Prize for up to $250,000 to be used to create recreation areas and schoolyards that are open to the public after-school hours.
What's the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, on the question, one concern, and I know, I'm not sure if everybody received this email. I got an email from an individual. One of my concerns is that we're going to accept this fund, these funds, and a big part of it's that they're open to the public after school. Yet they updated recently Prescott Elementary School, and that playground is locked at, I think, 3:30 or 4 o'clock every day, and the public has no access. If we're going to accept this grant, utilize this funding, we need to make sure that the Scranton School District is going to allow accessibility at, I think it's John F. Kennedy Elementary School, to ensure that the public has access to that area after hours. So I'm just hoping that we get cooperation from the school district and they realize the benefits of this funding. But a big part of it is, I know when I was superintendent of Lakeland, we got two grants to help redo the rubberized track up at Lakeland. And a big part of that was, one was a Keystone Opportunity Grant, and the other one was a Greenways and Trails Grant. A big part of that was that it had to be open to the community after hours, after the students were done with track practice or football practice or what have you. It needed to be available to the public. And I believe that's what this grant is indicating. So I'm hoping through our committees, you know, the multi-service committees, or what's the word I'm looking for?
Shared services.
The shared services committee, that we can work with this grant school district to ensure that the public's going to be able to utilize this, and quite frankly, children after-school hours, to be able to enjoy this. Having said that, I will, I am voting in the affirmative for this tonight.
On the question, I agree with Councilman King. That was what I thought was the initial intent with the Prescott Playground. And I know I'm a block away from it. I'd love for my daughter to be able to use it before she's actually a student at Prescott. So, yeah, I would be hopeful that, for this grant as well, that it would be open to the community outside of school hours.
And if it's not, it sounds like we're going to be in violation of this grant.
Also, has any communication, has there been any communication with the district as to who, and, you know, of course, it'd be someone certified with background checks, but who's going to be part of that process?
Well, it says it's in partnership. It's in partnership with Valley in Motion and the Scranton School District. So they're obviously aware. So I'm just hoping that we follow through with that, and it is, in fact, open to the public after-school hours. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed with Council Number 53, 2023.
This is the ordinance, establishment of an environmental advisory council for the city and its table until more information is received.
8B, filed with Council Number 54, 2023.
This is the zoning ordinance. It's been tabled as required by the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. It will be brought back from the table and placed in seventh order for a vote after a public hearing is held next Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. There's no further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.